Make your decision for the people of Alcona County, amen.
Fighting for the rights of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every equal justice for all.
Roll call.
Craigie.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Jackson.
Here.
Brumman.
Here.
Small.
Here.
I'll make a motion in December 5th and a special meeting December 10th. Now we have a discussion, yes?
Um. On the primary minutes. Um. I believe on page two. Towards the bottom, voting by Craigie Second and by James. Will somebody please identify for me what's on seven thirty eight is?
EDC.
Not on seven twenty eight, it's two forty four.
Would you amend that? Do you read two forty four? Got that, something?
About two forty four, yeah.
That's the EDC budget?
Yeah. And then on the last page, I'm sure you all know the time is coming to run it.
You know. That was about Peter. Oh, we're going.
All right.
We did on four.
Yeah, we're kind of regenerating, going in and out, we're not here. Right? Get the ball, there you go. That's one.
We've gone for almost a whole hour on reset. I didn't have that much time to play. I'm in the book the rest of the time.
It's two forty one.
So we're meant three twenty five to two forty. Right? Perfect.
Yeah. And we then from closed session. At three oh nine, but we didn't go into closed session until three twenty five. And I don't know the exact time for it, I don't reckon that.
Two forty one, so we're in a closed session. At three oh nine, four to even be. Well, we took our read pass, so that whole time. So we just gotta change three twenty five to two forty.
Two thirty seven.
Yeah.
Two forty nine.
Forty, we resumed. Two forty one, closed session.
Yep, the two forty.
We resumed again at three twenty five return. So they don't want to change that one. That they want them?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Finally resumed, we resumed at two forty.
Good catch.
Both can approve with changes as. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All opposed, both carries. Public comment, three minutes, identify yourself, be conscious. No public comment, alright. Next up, Judge Lewis, Trial Court Administrator, Building Preservation Fund Resolution Policy.
Thank you. On June seventeenth, that was the county board attachment of Act of twenty fifteen, the Alcona County Board of Commissioners Act of Resolution, um, enacting a county preservation fund, it was Resolution twenty fifteen eleven. The fund was created pursuant to Act number one seventy seven, Public Act nineteen forty three, for the purposes of improving, acquiring, constructing, extending, altering, repairing, or equipping the county buildings for Alcona County. Primarily, the fund received ten dollars from fines and costs imposed by the Twenty First Circuit and the eighty first District Court for Alcona, and all those cases derived from violations of penal law or civil infractions. The funds were conveyed from the court of the circuit court and the court of the district court to the Alcona County Treasury each month, and the treasury transferred into a fund for the purposes previously indicated. Recently, the Michigan Court of Appeals has questioned the local court's authority to assess the fund. As such, it has been advised that the court no longer order these amounts on these cases. However, the county can continue to earmark these funds after they are transmitted from the court for the purposes originally intended. So based on a three-year average, I use the numbers from twenty two, twenty three, and twenty four, ten percent of paid court costs would equal a current assessment of building preservation costs. At the recommendation of the finance committee, I met with Cheryl, County Treasurer, and we came up with some idea on how this could look, so that we decided we needed to have this fund. And it was recommended that each month, after courts have transmitted court costs to, after the circuit court and the district court have transmitted these court costs to the treasury, the treasury will separate ten percent from the standard general fund for the building preservation fund. And we're asked about that. That that original, um, resolution be amended to allow for that. I have prepared a proposed resolution that pretty much states all that and asks me for it to be effective the first of the year. Another thing that has come up with this, there's been a lot of requests for use of the building preservation fund from various department heads. And the fund does not, although it does continue to supplement, it does not, it's not open-ended, you know, I mean, it will run out. So, and it's based on literally case load, so depending on how that's going and what kind of cases we have, that's how that works. Um, we met up with Judge, uh, we talked to finance about this, and we met with Judge Bowley and the Director of Finance, Nancy, and decided it might be best if those, because Dave is the one that's in charge of everything going on in the building, he knows what are priorities, he knows what's in a foreign situation, what should be done, versus different cosmetic things that someone may request for their office. So we've recommended a committee, made up of Dave, the judge, court administrator, when a department head has a request, a specific request, that they would go to Dave first. They would look at his priority list, bring it to the committee, and then we'd make a recommendation as to whether or not those funds be decided for the request. Based on his big list of priorities, um. The other, uh, thing that we talked about, try to preserve the fund to keep it from running out, is that sometimes when these requests are made, that we may ask the department head to match up with their budget. Or the cost for the project. So. Any questions?
Yeah.
The real? Alright.
Where's the ninety percent in? Part of the general fund?
Yeah.
So change is nothing that the county is currently getting to their funding, they're just reworking it because the court can't send it separately. We're not allowed to do it separately right now. Well, we do it now, but we're not supposed to anymore?
Yes.
It's been recommended that we don't do it anymore? No.
Well, it's not.
First strike's all gold. And we're sort of in trouble.
We can do it, alright.
Following.
Actually, no, but.
The only thing, part of the resolution does not provide for the primary assignment. That I see anywhere.
Happy I have that at the bottom.
Oh, yeah, the problem.
We have to say. That's right here.
But there's in the version in.
Oh, I just prepared a draft that I forgot.
What number residential can we use?
Fifteen. This is just the proposal to record. I wasn't sure if you would go with it or not, I just wanted to provide something for language for you to think about.
Will this increase the amount of money?
No.
No, this is gonna keep the same amount, but now.
Just makes it same.
Well, instead of you guys doing that, the treasurer has to do close the same numbers.
It's not gonna change much, other than how it happens.
Depending on case load.
Always depending on case load. Yeah, that's why I did a three-year average, to kind of get an idea on what percentage.
Well, how did we figure it before?
The court automatically assessed ten dollars. We took, we took our maximum cost that we were using and deducted ten dollars.
Didn't think it was the same, but.
It worked out, but there's really not a achievable way of figuring this out markedly without it being a.
No, it's the possibility to have increased dollars, so. That's based on cases. Sorry, maybe our project.
No, that was recommendation, Cheryl, but I thought it was actually going up to come up with a percentage that way, because I had been trying to wrap around my head a way of going from cases that's asked and paid, but wasn't coming up with any clear way of doing that. And that was Cheryl's suggestion, and I thought it was a really good one.
Okay.
Chairman, if you so please, I would move to adopt our resolution twenty twenty four dash fifteen, and also I suggest you to sign.
I support. That might have been the latest question I've ever received in this seat.
Craigie.
Before we do that, what's, what one is it that we would be getting the ten percent of? Whether we're figuring this out or not.
I'm not sure anything else.
Well, you're, you're putting ten percent against.
District court costs and sort of court costs, all criminal, any case that are violation of penal law.
I was just looking at their revenue and forty billion, that matters.
You shouldn't see much difference in what you see for revenue rate.
Yeah. I support. Uh, okay, who supported? Any more conversation, comments, questions? Then we will do a roll call.
Small.
Yes.
Craigie.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Brumman.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Register D memorandum of understanding.
Please find him.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
I did email, um, a blank copy of this, I still put personnel about this a couple weeks ago, and, um, the search program in the register's office is being upgraded and, um, equalization also utilizes that. So I have a memorandum of understanding between the register of deeds office and the equalization department. I'm asking for a department head's signature, the personnel wanted me to bring this before the board, so ultimately I'm just asking for a signature um, for the memorandum of understanding between registered deeds and equalization. I'm sorry, I didn't, if I counted, I didn't know, I apologize.
Give us the gist.
So, right now, the search program, you know, they utilize the same search program that we do, we search documents, so it's going from the desktop version to a web-based version. So when that changes, then, um, just, I mean, I'm basically just asking that they could, you know, they're not supposed to sell the copies while under this, um. The record shall be kept confidential, shall not be disclosed to other county employees or other departments of your third parties, except as required to perform the duties for which the information was required. Without prior consent of the register of deeds, access outside of normal business hours, Monday through Friday, eight thirty to four thirty, shall result in termination of access to a legal anywhere.
The time will be like, like it's a. I read through it and see anything.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, or, yeah, I'll make a motion to, what is it?
I'm just asking for a signature. I've already had the employees and equalization.
Well, I have a motion to, uh, the chair signing.
I'll make a motion to have the chair sign the what? Letter of under, memo of understanding.
Standing second is by me. Any more conversation? Okay. Oh. Well.
Johnson.
Yes.
Brumman.
Yeah.
Small.
Yeah.
Jackson.
Craigie.
Yes.
Would you like me to leave my server?
Yeah, you better. He's gonna wanna copy.
Okay, yes, I'll wanna copy too, one, two, three. Thank you, thanks.
Equalization, your end report.
Okay, this time I have visual length.
Good evening, I hope everybody's well, can't you any good today? Hope they need to cover it up, you know.
So I kind of just compiled, uh, the studies we put together through the year, um. Lauren and Mike did an awesome job considering changeover and learning everything. Um. Pretty self-explanatory, the first part. Land values by class, showed you where we're at, um. Residential, there was quite a bit of change in residential. Um, and for example, five acres last year was twenty eight hundred a acre, now it's fifty four. Five acres though are, there are wild cards, you just never know, so they're kind of the bad ones. The other ones are just two to three to four hundred dollar increases, um, we don't have enough sales in commercial and industrial to justify a change, but we kind of kept it the same. And, uh, you're welcome, Craig.
Yeah.
Ag land went up four hundred bucks an acre. Sorry.
Yeah.
And then the next page is just lakes, like same as, um, commercial industrial, there's not a whole lot of sales to go with. So those did not go up much, if at all.
That's how much dollars per foot range?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and the reason, like say rural, rural subdivisions has a one hundred to three hundred, because we can't just slap a one hundred dollar for Barton City versus Glenny, you know, so there's kind of a range that way the state doesn't yell at us for using numbers we don't have. And the ECF page, that's super exciting stuff there, um. There's kind of an explanation as to what we do with that. We have to plug it into our appraisal that's supposed to bring the manual prices down to a neighborhood price, neighborhood value. Um.
Things you knew were found that were poor.
Yeah. So, yeah, and you can see, so point eight one percent, and we have to bring the cost manual down that far to reach Alcona County values. Well, let's see. You have any questions on that? I can go in more detail, but I won't bore you too long. Um, the next three pages, ag, commercial, and industrial are what Lauren focuses on. These are her appraisal studies, um. I put in last year's ratios, just so you could see, I mean, we know the market's still high, but not crazy like it was the year prior. So the ratios look a little better on most everything, so you could if there's a forty five percent ratio, it's roughly ten percent the assessor has to raise for that entire class. Um. Commercial pretty much the same. Ag was the worst, and I think it's because, from what we can tell, the assessors have not brought their land values up to current values. They were pretty darn low. Even our vacant appraisals were in the forties. Um, let's see, the residential one, that is sale-based, so all the feeds Mike puts in, we run a sales study, we take out, um, anything under eighty five percent or over, no, prices, but under fifteen percent, over eighty five percent. Those are outliers. Um, and Lauren still does fieldwork on those. She has to do vacants for our land values, and then approved, um, residential for our ECF study. So we figure she did about two hundred and forty five site visits this year. Well, she did, I, I gotta give her a plug, because between Rayanne leaving and having to train a new person, the fact that she got this done in time, that gave you credit. It's, it's, it's not easy, you gotta play the weather and all, everything, so. The next page is kind of just let you know, um, that I've submitted all these forms to the state. Um, there have not been any problems except down, uh, the forty eighteen. Why this is happening is beyond me. Somehow, the S and A their, their ratios are rounding different now. They aren't, you know, if you're, if it's five or above, you're supposed to round up. Well, the S and A is not doing that for some reason, so everybody in the county in the state that uploaded their forty eighteens before on the next week, they're funky, they don't, they don't match what we would run out of the state program. They're fixing it. I don't know how it got changed. Um. We've had a lot of I don't wanna call anybody out, a lot of local unit people still questioning what they can get from us and what we're not doing anymore, so I kind of put a chart in there to show you. Nothing's really changed except printing the assessment notices and the tax bills and all the preparation for that. But we don't do it for township records anymore. Those are our records, those are county records. The townships, we've pushed all of that back onto basically the assessor. So it's the assessor's job now to update the treasurers for tax bills, uh, delinquent notices, assessment change notices, all of that should be coming from them, and it's, it's not a terrible process, it's a quick export import, takes like thirty seconds, a couple times a year, and you're updated. Um, let's see, what else do I have? I'm going to send with a bullet, but one of the things that is good for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty five with the vet exemption, it's a one-and-done application. So many vets are angry because, I don't wanna say angry, they're, it's an hassle to have to apply every year, they're permanently disabled, they're not gonna spontaneously be better. So the state actually said, okay, twenty twenty five, you apply, you're good. New people will still have to apply, obviously, but you don't have to do it every year now.
Wow, there'd be a lot less board review traffic now.
Yeah, they have, well, the board review no longer has any authority over, uh, that exemption now. The assessor.
The assessor evaluates and thinks of him.
Yep. And they can do it kind of all year long, um, it's interesting. Yeah, so that's it. Any questions?
Who's calling in about egg when you vote night? A lot of the, a lot of the townships really dropped. Alonia dropped? Oh, I said a lot, maybe others dropped. Dustin dropped.
I think there was like three of them that.
Paulson, he's not.
Yeah, he is all. We don't, obviously, we don't pull the same ones every year.
Right.
We have to just randomly choose, so it's possible that instead of running whatever they were supposed to last year over the whole thing, they, you could pick and choose also to get your numbers up. That's possible. Um, it's also possible that, like I said, the land values, they're just not bringing them up, and um. They have to run their own ECF study too, so if their ECF is way won't year than ours, because they have to go with township sales, we have the whole county to work with. So that's where a lot of that can come from. But I can be happy here.
My beautiful bulletin?
Yes. Good, nobody has any questions?
The real? Okay.
Alright, thank you.
So, I guess first right here in unfinished business is the carriage office full-time position. Well, I asked for that to be on, but I thought it was gonna be a new business, uh, someday, because I don't think that's any. That correct? You guys do that. Welcome with down to the new business. Uh, let's do the claims.
I'd like to make a motion, uh, to approve pre-authorized claims and open claims presented for payment between December fifth, twenty four, and December seventeenth, twenty four, for check numbers one five six one three eight to one five six two nine six, and E checks two five zero nine to two five twenty one for a grand total of six hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars and twenty-one cents.
Seconded. Are you, uh, questions, comments? Roll call.
Brumman.
Yes.
Small.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Craigie.
Yes. First meeting of the year, Stephanie, I'm sure you have something to say about this.
The first meeting of the year, yes. I was gonna say, January first, and the building's closed.
The second. Oh. Yeah, if we want to have everything organized and in line, I guess we're gonna have it on second.
So do the organizational meeting first, regular meeting right after?
Yep.
To follow?
Yep. Here are our meetings. Yeah, we'll do the organizational first. We'll still start at one thirty.
One thirty.
And then we'll go into the regular. We need to vote on that? No, right?
You'll vote on your regular meeting dates at your organizational meeting.
Just want to make sure, I don't want to adjourn today and then you go, oh, guess what?
No, because you don't have any meeting set. Yeah, for the twenty twenty five.
Excellent. Um, Curtis Township Library.
Um, Denise came in and spoke to me about the Curtis Township Library. Um, she believes the insurance carrier they have, um, that they can much better reduce rate uh, with M M R M A. And I asked her to to reach out to our representative, Bob Howell, and so she did do that. She had some questions. Um, there, I'm, I'm being c-cited on the emails and I can see the conversations from me and fork between Denise and Bob is it will be um, because the library falls under the county blanket now, the library.
Yep.
The main one. Um, that they could be included uh, like the rest of the other libraries in our county. And so Bob first wanted to see if that would be doable, and he said that as far as liability and the property itself, yes. Um, she keeps asking questions in regard to like the individual people themselves, and he thinks she's got it confused. Um, so they're, they were emailing more. Um, they had some forms for Denise to fill out, but really ultimately that comes down to you to approve that, that township for Curtis Library is going to be like all the rest of the local libraries. Um, and then Denise is aware if there's any further incurred costs, they, he, he doesn't believe that there will be, but if there is, and there may be, um, then Denise is aware that they'll be responsible for that. That bill.
You might not know the answer to this question, but when it comes bills, I see um, Miles turned in for employees. Is, uh, do they on the clock travel between?
I believe so, yes, to cover, to cover Alton Curtis.
Yeah. That would be considered an insurance as well then, right?
Maybe that's what she's questioning. I, I wasn't.
I only bring it up because I'm going through something similar. I can't use my personal vehicle anymore at where I work because uh, insurance won't cover me and my personal vehicle has to be a vehicle owned by a company. Remember, it may be different. I'm just saying. Something about authentic lately, so. So what does she look for ultimately? Approval to allow Curtis to be the same.
Be under.
Be in our south.
Uh, uh, yes.
But she didn't move it. It's a unique relationship with Curtis Library, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, we just took that under our umbrella last year.
Yeah. Pretty much, though they're still they're tiny. They still own the land, though, correct?
There are contracts?
Yeah, there's contracts.
Okay.
But we, they still own the land and the building, don't they?
They're, oh, so like Mikado, we, they lease a space from evil, uh, etcetera.
It's different because they were an independent actual state represented
Yeah.
library. Now they're working under Alcone County, over a separate library. Now they're with the contract fair, Alcone County.
I see.
The funds are going to the, our library to cover the cost of what they got from the annual fines and that kind of thing. So the contract is incorporated and I don't have that Alcone County money.
No, well, why would you, well, I believe they still own them. Their Curtis Township still owns the property and they
Well, it's fine.
Control.
Yeah.
That's fine.
From the building.
Caldonia.
I'm sure that we have.
They own the property.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think that's how those roll, but then
she looked at us and
Well, that was the problem with it. Yeah, that was.
Well, it, it would be similar to Mikado, which has already been in place for all these years, you know? They, they lease a space for the city, so. So that being said, um, does she want a motion or she allowed?
She didn't ask for a motion. It's just for you to approve. I'm not going to just go add an entity onto the insurance myself. So I'm, you know, you guys could say no. It's a song that there was a.
Oh, yeah, it seems to me if they're now all one entity, it's automatic.
I don't know when her renewal is for her insurance there. You know, it could be a few months. I don't, I don't know for sure.
It really, it's not a merger. There, there's a little line in there, a little spread in there, and I don't remember the details of it. But, um, I'm just, I don't know that the general will.
Is it worth Mr. White will take a look at the situation?
He's not.
I think we've already got the contract in place. Correct? I mean, there is a contract. And so it should spell exactly where it is. I think what you said though, was because the property was still separate. That's why there's some questions whether or not the insurance will pick it up if that.
And they said that they would.
And they said they would.
They said that they could and that they would. Okay, yes.
I guess. What do we give a motion to?
Yeah, she, she's not gonna just add it without direction, so.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support that. Will we support it? Any more conversation?
Can we, can we add in there that, I mean, I'm sure it's assumed that they, they will pay whatever the premium due is.
Full cost we're.
Yeah, the full cost of the premium that's adjusted up is responsibility of
Yeah, or it's currently uh, awarded, yeah.
Yeah, I own the contract, sure.
I mean, I'm sure, oh, that's just to have it.
Oh, we're not free.
That would be assumed.
States were gonna have to follow, hopefully, have to do this. That would be Michael. It's already up there. They've done this multiple, uh, almost a year they took, or two years to get this thing?
Essentially, we're providing the insurance under our blanket and they're gonna pay us back.
But I can't say I know that.
Depending on how it's prorated by the clerk's house.
Yeah, okay.
The proration would include an additional building to the library of the liability as opposed to spreading it out. There, well, each entity's budgeted for.
Right.
They're creating it.
So even, I didn't notice about like A or A then they're. Okay.
Your glitch, now kind of coming back, is that they are employees still out of out of Curtis. And because it had to do with their retirement.
I think the glitch has more our retired, our lighter board compared to the ultimate.
I, I'm likely to blow this nine. I'm not a builder.
Uh, I think the way to defend with organize.
They tried to, but, but they could not, what they wanted was insurance, that they would have come, come in with our system. And that's why as employees, they are, they are not all employees.
But they are since the contract, we're paying as employees.
Yes. That's what I understand.
It's when they wanted to become, I can't remember if it was the district library, they wanted to be something separate. And you guys shut that down because they would have became, uh, to a couple of them full-time employees, who would have to offer them that. And the whole board, as a whole, turned that down. And so then.
Actually, clarification, they decided they didn't want to do it. I don't recall that we pulled it down.
In fact, I have.
They came to us and said it was not financially feasible for them to do that.
Yeah. I believe that was worked on now.
This didn't happen in the last two years, right? This happened, did it happen in the last two years?
Yeah.
No, it was before that. That is, the, the beginning of the conversation when they were trying to break out on their own.
Right, they wanted.
It took a step right when we got in.
Okay.
But I think it would all happen that following forward. Yes, there was a grievance, but, um, certain fees being charged. Then David said, well, we'll go on our own. And then they found out that it was a pretty big bargain to stay with us.
That becomes a habit in a way, and that's how it goes.
Everybody needs an opportunity to learn, you know? That's how it works. Okay, we got a motion on the floor. Uh, any more discussion? Let's do, uh, roll call.
Brady?
Yes.
Brennan?
Well.
Clarification. What are we specifically voting on? What, what, how does the motion read?
Uh, the Curtis Township Library um, can fall beneath the coverage of the county's liability insurance, but the cost of the premium are you charged back to the library?
Does not seem unreasonable. Thank you. And I don't guess that. I think you would just call my name.
That was me. Roll call again. Let's just do it.
Brady?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Gotz?
Yes.
All right, now let's talk about treasurer's office full-time position. What's the resolution for, I don't have that resolution. Or local control?
Oh.
Oh, sorry.
I believe it's not present, twenty four dash twenty five, which is to support local control and claim, um.
What was the sole thing?
This is the one, the letter we were waiting for from the attorney.
That we want to have a resolution, but we can't get in on the lawsuit.
But this is attached to the lawsuit and, correct? And we may end up being added as a law right. Anyway, Michael has asserted that this is what we need to do if we don't have it known to be a fraud.
Okay. Was this resolution?
Yeah. Twenty, twenty four dash twenty five, no, twenty six.
Who wants to make them?
Sixteen.
Look at the volunteer you're making.
I thought I heard.
Oh, okay. We have a motion, I'll support. We have a support. Any more discussion? Roll call?
Ma?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Yax?
Yes.
What is our full-time position? Well, I, I brought that to the board.
Yep.
Um, and I guess I would have brought it under, what came up at a workshop, I think the budget workshop that we were gonna budget uh, more for another full-time position or a, for a full-time position in treasurer's office. Of course, now I haven't seen it in the bottles. Um, I do believe, uh, we have the responsibility under M C L three eight thirty seven, which is treasures, that treasurer may employ personnel necessary and approved by the county board commission. So I think we have the responsibility. We're gonna create a position, we gotta approve it, not simply through budget. Um, financing a position and we need to say, yeah, we're gonna create a position. So that's, that's why I brought it up, and I wanted to have a discussion about it.
Okay.
It is, are you still requesting a position to be created for that?
Full time?
That was my reply.
I'm sure it's taken.
Yes, that was my reply.
Okay. Based on that and I did some moves that we authorized the, um, full-time position in the treasurer's office as requested.
Hold second. Let's discuss. I'll be to bring up some things here or?
Yeah.
Discussion, discussion. So, uh, personnel, Terry and I both talked for this. So first issue was, and I, I think it has been um, kind of our, our position, that not to create any more union positions here. I had a conversation with Tony Fletcher, who's the business or the union rep toward the union. This will have to be a union position, whether it's full-time or part-time. Um, there's really no doubt about it. There was no, nothing management or anything, unless it's gonna be a managed position. So I don't think it's going to be. It's gonna be a required position. So that will have to be a union with all the trappings of of insurances and retirements and everything along that lines. Um, secondly, um, that was the first one. What was, what else do we? Bringing information so that everybody knows what they're going on here. Oh, I don't know. So we didn't know what, is this a two oh one? Is it a, is there a pay rate?
Was there a conversation that we had that I'm not recalling that you came to me and asked me about that?
Only what was discussed in, that it went through finance, it came through the workshop.
Right. So I'm not aware of your questions. If you'd like to discuss it after and maybe what this.
Well.
It was never a conversation that we had.
Well, the conversation was, if you wanted a full-time person in your office. Well, that's what we're talking about. It's been properly moved and properly segmented, so that's what we'll discuss. We're just asking you, is it gonna be a two oh one or not? If, if we're not gonna get that answer, then we won't talk about that part of it. So we don't know that amount or what that was gonna be. Um, along with um, let's see. Oh, let's see, spoke with Tony, uh, uh, so this is, that was just for the board's appetite. My own personal opinion on it was, I did speak to my treasurers in my district to see if there was a reasoning behind needing another person. Uh, none of them said they didn't see a reason why. They seemed to say things were working fine the way they are. Um, so they didn't. I did, we did speak with all the assessors, or I did. Uh, everyone except, uh, Albert, you can't get a hold of him. Um, they were, they seemed happy with the way the situation was now, so I know didn't realize there was a need for an extra person. Um, again, I'm speaking from my own personal, so I, I, I'm, I'm gonna speak to this as I'm against creating another union position in the building. Um, we did spend the last workshop time, uh, and a special meeting. Uh, though I know we did not direct him not to, but it was sort of implied that we didn't want the sheriff to finance another position or pay for another car. I don't think, I'm not comfortable with not doing that and then creating a clerical position in the building. It hasn't, it's, historically, there has not been an additional person in the, in the office. Why there would need to be one now, I haven't, I haven't don't see the reasoning for it. And I'm not, I'm not comfortable with not you know, giving full finance for a, an officer or a police car in order to create another secretarial position.
Question, Cheryl? I believe in your presentation at the last meeting, you said this would be a non-union position. Correct?
That was what was suggested. It was suggested prior to negotiations to a conversation that I had with planning a family, correct? In regards to utilizing, um, that in the negotiations, because that was my intention, so. But there was no other conversation. You were, and not at that meeting. Uh, I think Adam sat in for that meeting. So I had discussed that with personnel at that time, that it was my intention to request that for the coming year. But I was never approached by personnel in regards to that. So I assumed that this was going to be a non-union because it was it was put aside by the discussion I had with personnel, not as a formal meeting with the two of you, but it was during, before the conversation. So there, um, there was, has been no conversation from personnel in it to me in regards to that. So I assumed we were going with a non-union position because it fell in that parameter.
All right, now knowing that this quarter will be a union position, do you withdraw that request?
Absolutely not.
Any other comments, questions?
I, I'm do want to go with the part-time and will. At one point, if you want to find out it isn't needed and eliminated, or it would have to be a union position?
Well, I think that's, that's, yeah, it's gonna have to be union no matter what.
My thinking, that's, that's, yeah, it's gonna have to be union no matter what.
So didn't we talk about that, I think at our budget workshop meeting, that we wanted to spend a certain amount of money to do a, a study. On all the offices and see who and what and what was needed. And maybe we should wait until that's done before we start adding positions.
To my knowledge, I don't recall any part of the conversation being as faultless needed. My recollection of the conversation is, those who are doing, what are they doing? And to what degree does it need to be leveled at? A primary, secondary, anything like that. I don't. My, I would be. Very happy if we didn't weigh with one O one, one O two, I'm sorry, one O one, two O one and three O one, but it is not a functioning system. If it was at one time, it certainly isn't anymore. And that's what the survey was going to do, it was not going to have anything to do, in my recollection. With who needed what. It was the tasks and the jobs that were assigned and being done by individuals within the offices, that doesn't. Have anything to do with. They're, they're two separate surveys.
Well, I would, if we do it, I would ask that we make it two separate, they can bring them together, because it would, it would certainly be. Informative to see what is each office doing and what is needed. Um, we have this discussion a lot, whose job is what, we got, we had a ton of MOUs and LOUs, because we had people who were. They were gonna do this job and, and then they didn't have the certification and we're paying more here and there, it, it's a convoluted mess, so I, I think it does need to be studied. Or, and I think we kind of agreed that it should be done, maybe not by us, but an unbiased third party position. Who has no dog in the fight on who and what your office is running like, and let them. Look at each office and determine what's necessary, what is needed and where they should be and what it, what it, what's the.
I would have a tendency to challenge an outsider in having full comprehension of what happens in the courts office, what's treasurer's office, or the judiciary. I mean, how long, how long are you going to pay for someone to sit in their office?
All they do is, uh, yeah, we don't have to pay them for a length of time.
Yes, you're just gonna take time to interview each person and what they are doing.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it's a time study. This is, uh, be meaningful to, for factual, but this conversation really isn't going towards the current motion.
Well, only to point that we're gonna, if, you know, i- if we're considering creating a new position, perhaps we should wait until we decide whether or not. This is, uh, this needed, take nothing away from the treasurer, she's making a request, I understand that, it doesn't mean we agree with that. There's, there's nothing, there's no personnel, personality here or personal mention, and it's just. Um, are we, I, I don't feel comfortable doing the research I've done, that there is a necessity for another person. Um, that's my position.
Respect, I need to interject my opinion, you're asking township treasurers in regards to the job of the county treasurer. And they don't necessarily. They're not the same jobs, they're two totally different jobs, they have different statutory. Responsibilities than the county treasurer's do. And the amount of. The context of the work is different, the assessors, they're, they're working with the townships that has. It has direct impact on the things that we do here at the county, but with the experience that I have. Um. And seeing the changes in the laws and the requirements and the statutory duties that are required of the treasurer's office for the county. Are different than what's required for the township, so that's not really a fair comparison and it. Like you said, taking all personal. Things out of it, i- it's just comparing different things.
I wasn't, so I'm not comparing the treasurer's job to township's job, what I asked simply was. You had said in one of our network chat meetings, and one of the reasons you need this extra person, because you had new treasurers. And there's a lot of stuff that they didn't know what they were doing, that's causing a lot more workload on you. That was your, that is what you said.
I did not say that, but.
Well, so we'll have to disagree on that, so you said, I have, I have several new treasurers, you said in another meeting when I was in, and you said it in this meeting. So I assume that that, that was the issue, is that the treasurers, or one of the problem, or one of the reasons was that the treasurers weren't. Getting it, you said, you said you had several new, or two new treasurers.
Two, two new treasures I do have, and I think this discussion would be better. Outside of this public meeting and maybe we can redirect to the actual motion on the table.
The job that she was requesting was a delinquent tax roll maintenance assistant. That was.
Because the treasurer actually brought it up, all food to table.
Your second? Terry, I'll support, thanks. Who supported, all in favor?
I may ask.
Roll call?
Yax.
No.
From it, no. Brady.
No. You're gonna get that too.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Johnson.
Uh, yes.
Small.
Yes.
That was pregnant pause. All right, the original motion stands, does anybody have anything to contribute that's not already said?
Can we amend the motion to be a part time?
You can make a motion to amend.
I'd like to make a motion to amend it to be a hard time position, it will have to be a union position.
I will support that.
Move to seconded, uh, roll call.
Hey, hey, hey. Wait a minute.
Conversation. Oh, move, this is the move to amend.
Sure.
Oh, conversation, yeah, sorry.
Who, who was the first? Okay.
Yep.
Who was the second, Carolyn?
Yep.
Yes.
So the, the motion is to amend the original motion to be part time instead of full time.
Again, this would be a.
Union position.
Union position.
That motion, Karen, correct?
No, not yet, we're having conversations about that motion right now.
I remember a couple.
Well, we didn't have a vote yet. It was a way, hey, ho, ho. That's what we got. Uh, so discussion, yes, part time, anything?
Will part time. Really resolve the issue adequately? Or will this be a bandaid?
Or it's, you're looking at twenty eight hours versus thirty five.
Correct.
I give you my request, okay. I am asking for what I asked for and the choices you're on, what you decide to do.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
I guess, are you saying what you. We just said that again.
What she said was, she requested full time.
Yeah.
She was questioned if part time would be enough and her, she maintains that I requested for full time. And she was not to discuss other than the change.
Request changed originally.
Right. She's requesting what she's requesting, we have power to make decisions, not a move forward.
So we're gonna go on the amendment, correct?
Correct. Yeah, we're supporting amend, we're not, then we'll go on the actual motion, which has turned into a big.
The actual motion, your full time position, we're gonna amend it to part time.
Correct.
So we're gonna be discuss that and then we're gonna go on it.
Correct. Everybody ready? Not deciding if it's okay yet, I'm just deciding to amend. Then we can decide if it's okay. Okay, roll call please.
Brady.
Yes.
Small.
No.
From it, no. Johnson.
Um, I want to stay with no.
Yax.
Yes.
Okay. Then with original motion stands at full time, any last discussion before we have our last vote?
I call a question.
What does that mean?
Do you chance to vote now?
Okay. All right, roll call please.
Yax.
Yes.
Johnson.
No.
From it.
Yes.
Brady.
Yes.
Paul.
No.
Motion, Carrie.
Hey. You're ready, roll. Who we on, finance report.
Request here from Stephanie, the mixed money changes.
Oh, no, this is, what is it, Stephanie?
Pardon?
What does this case of information here?
This is a request for a budget adjustment, uh, for the twenty twenty five. Court's budget that has not been voted on yet, uh, that would be your public hearing on the thirtieth, eleven AM. And, uh. Within the contract for the teensters, I can budget for up to forty hours, uh, for the girls to work. Right now, they're working extra hours and they're just accumulating comp time, which they can cash out just the same. This would be just an extra half an hour a day, um, they would come in and start work at eight AM. And, um, also Sheila pointed out, a lot of the teensters, union of the positions, their leave banks to get this. Because of what they ratified on, I had budgeted for up to three hundred dollars and I only, three hundred hours, and I only. Budgeted for what was in addition to, well, when they ratified their contract, they didn't cap their PTO. So they can cash out what they want, so I had to increase the leave pay line, adjust their line items for their, their wages. And then fix the bike up as well. Someone requested the budget be changed.
So we did, Steph talked to me, I don't know if you were there, well, personnel, she asked about this and we had a discussion. And I, and she suggested this and I, but, you know, for, for what's going on there, that would be us. So we're putting this in this budget.
Correct, I didn't wanna just change the budget and be aware of it.
We've already posted. And it seems like we'd have to do this after the first year, am I wrong?
And, and that.
Can we amend the budget once we've advertised?
You've advertised it, now you're having a hearing where you can make the changes that I'm.
Okay, great, all right, I just wanna make sure we weren't stepping on our toes here. So.
That wasn't like.
Oh, this, you this, it's gonna happen, what's happened, okay, all right, all right.
From otherwise, uh, yes, so we got. Is that? Because I want, I was thinking, no, the special decision, oh, but. That's a little, anyway, uh, so, uh, what? Where's this from?
Cheryl.
This, this is another one.
Cheryl, do you want to explain? Our two thirty eight?
Two thirty eight, there was a issue with the, um. Increased in what had come into the budget, so the bottom line needed to be increased twenty dollars, there was interest that came into that line, two thirty eight. Or that fund two thirty eight, so the bottom line adjusted increases twenty dollars. From seven hundred eighty to eight hundred dollars for two thirty eight. Which is the discretionary fund. The seven hundred fifty dollars from the general fund goes in there, and then save for, um, the. Recycle, for the every other year cleanup, the other one is the ambulance department had an increase in fees. Of thirty thousand dollars, and that would be a minimum bottom line for expenditures and it. The increased revenue had covered some of the shortfall in, but the, the rest of it went into contingency. And I had spoken to Scott about that and also we'll be having a change in his budget. For the twenty twenty five, based on conversations we had, I believe there was a per day with personnel, so those will be presented at. Or at the budget hearing as well, but that's to describe those two, that was.
So who?
For two thirty eight and two ten.
We have to do something back on this right now?
Was there any motion to that, right, yeah? Cause. Who supported, any more questions, comments? Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
From it, yes, small.
Yes.
Brady.
Yes.
Yax.
Yes.
Two thirty.
Two thirty eight was fine.
Thinking you work on. Twenty twenty five budgets. I have meeting after the speaking, they, that discuss other, that level item. So in interest to keep a new business in the business, personnel will bring forth, but agreement on EMS right now, if you wanna go on that now or?
Yeah, so we're gonna wait until personnel works. Well, we're doing finance anyway, so.
Oh, that was finance report, I even though we kept in the finance report.
There's one more thing for finance that we've been about, and then you can explain twenty four budget for the year end.
Oh, yeah.
Authorized changes.
So every year, um, uh, finance committee asks for the board's permission to do the twenty twenty five year end changes. Twenty twenty four, I mean, hearing changes. Um, I'll make a motion to do that.
I'll support.
So we just seconded, any questions, comments? Okay, um. Roll call.
Small.
Yes.
From it, yes, yax.
Yes.
Brady.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Personnel.
So, um, we did meet the, the MSU meeting yesterday. Twenty four was telling Tony, um, as you remember, we talked about how there's an MOU that will expire at the end of this year. Wages that were over and about, the wages of the current contract, um, they requested, we were wondering, asking what was going to happen for the final year of the contract. Um, we have their resolution and we, uh, we agreed as personnel to maintain where we're at, no change up or down, they'll, they'll maintain the same MOU, we'll extend it one year till the end of twenty five.
So additional dollar wage that we approved for twenty twenty four is going to remain that same LOU through the end of their contract.
Through the end of their contract, okay. So, um. We had a tentative, we'd ask for a moment, I'd make a motion that we agree to that and send that MOU to them and they'll get a sign and get it back to us in one plan. I was like, go ahead, second, move to second, any more conversation?
Was this in, did you negotiate anything or what?
We did not, I know we talked about some things, but we've made it straight, um, just keep it everything the same. And that contract in particular, that the changes, they have a higher employee contribution on their healthcare for this thing here. Um, we did not get elements sessions, if you will, that we just maintained everything very well it's had.
Did you make that motion correct?
Yes.
And, uh, Terry seconded it, any other con-? Anything else? Uh, roll call.
Yax.
Yes.
From it.
Yes.
Brady.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Small.
Anything else, personnel?
I had this problem earlier today too, I don't know if I'm having a thing or what, though I have, um. No, I don't think it was. Equalization or Aaron took care of that, other than what she didn't bring up, so in talking with all the assessors this last week, they did have a chance to. Yeah, so we are gonna have a, a B F mark board review, all the assessors are gonna come in, they're gonna have a, you can greet and make sure everybody's on the same page and. The office is meeting their needs and they're meeting ours.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Terry, how, what do you need?
Are you cover, are you handling that?
Yes.
Like I don't have to.
No.
Okay, enough.
Well, yeah.
Okay, treasurer's report.
Okay, treasurer's report, please.
Uh we've done, we've done adjustments. For going off or making sure the budgets are cleaned up. Um we have not a whole lot of. We have a lot of new dogs in the area on dog licenses and then sales have been bringing. Since we put out the cards. Tax payment was lower at Ambridge where we have been for the last couple of years at the end of the year. Um. We've been contacted by title check for the new policies regarding the claims. That was put out. There was a letter to be sent to all the other parties of interest and that was put on hold due to um. Information regarding the lawsuit. That has not been settled yet. Um other than that, we're trying to kind of close along with twenty five and trying to get with everybody for. The information coming up on the thirtieth, which there's gonna be no changes, so I'll have those emailed out to you um. Probably by tomorrow. I am working with uh Nikita Township. There are some issues with their tax bills and went out twice. Um. A little uh. I'll be hopefully meeting with the township treasurer tomorrow. And Nancy speaking with her if I can get ahold of her and we'll be getting that resolved. My hopeful about the state of the text and the thing in regards to and the S and A. But hopefully we got that all straightened out and moving forward. Anyone have any question?
No.
And thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Cheryl. Uh clerk's report.
Monday, I got an email from Jennifer Winstead uh with forty four north. She has notified notified us, which. It was a large clerk serve conversation going on at state level as far as House Bill sixty fifty eight. In regard to the hard cap amount for health insurance. And uh it passed and it went through, which uh increased the hard cap for twenty twenty five. Um I I don't have a calculator, um because when Jen presented the hard cap rate. When we were considering our assurance from twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five, it was like a point zero two percent increase. Uh it was tiny. They didn't know why. Um then it started pushing through the house, this bill which passed on Friday. And what that means to us, uh because we opted out, it doesn't mean anything. For all those counties that did their budgets and opted in before these hard this new very brand new, I'm sure it's been a treasurer's. Clerk serve conversation as well. Uh big deal for them, that for us, but. That's it for.
What did they go through today? You got a number?
Eight thousand two hundred and fifty eight for a single. And then twenty two thousand five twenty three uh twenty twenty five, the original is twenty one thousand, so it's over roughly a thousand dollar increase. For a single double family. Um Cherry Capital. I will be happy when that fills all paid up. Um been in lots of conversations because of the holdup with the fifth installment. Um they're they are looking for that check. They're actually looking for drivers to come over here to pick up the checks from now on possibly. Um. I I said now that the twenty twenty five has appropriate budget, as soon as I get the invoice, we pay it. Um but as of right now, there are Doug Cheeks called, uh I've talked to Dave. Uh. After all of that, I got an email from Tom. Um and he's asking, you know, what can we do if we don't have this check by the end of the week? And I said, well, there is an option. I mean, there is something that we can do as like. Worst case scenario. Um so I I'm I'm fairly certain the check will be there probably today or tomorrow, so.
It went out already.
It already went out. It went on the twelfth. But no sooner did we send out the release the fifth installment, a week later I got the sixth installment. Check the budget. It was there, put it in. I said we process payments weekly. Um you know, I guess to pay, they need that money now.
It's such a grief. We just gave him a hundred thousand dollars thirty days ago. It doesn't matter. I mean, do they have twenty people working on our problem? That they're behind on payroll because you're not getting this check. It's insane. I'm sorry, I'm going off base here.
But did you say that they're gonna send the driver over here to pick up the check?
They they offered.
They offered that.
Um now, like I said, that 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 we're not gonna have this snafu in the budget where there is no money there. Cause it was, you know, not budgeted for. It it's not going to be a problem. It, you know, the money's there, you can cut the tax.
Apologize for my efforts.
Well, it was in the contract that it was contractual, it had to be done by the time or whatever.
Within ten days.
Within ten days of.
Which.
We'll thank you.
Had I known that that was in there, I could have said, hey, that's it might not be exactly ten days.
Well, I mean.
Everybody stop one of my emails, please, and calling and.
Well, if you figured it out.
It's gonna be fine. I was going forward. I was gonna say, I don't want to just turn around, set up an A C H for the last five payments, you know, whatever, but. Um communications from the attorney, um the mock bridge lawsuit, basically um. It's still still held up in appeals, nothing really new there. Um. It says the plaintiffs filed a motion to dismiss the underlying appeal by the co dependents. The court ordered that uh no further briefing be filed. Until a motion is resolved. It's just this one, so so not too much to report there. Um the county directory has been updated with all of the new uh candidates and uh. Uh the only thing that has to be done now is Lauren worked with updating all the assessors and zoning zoning administrators. So we just have to input that information and the county directory is ready for release for twenty twenty five. Um I also attended yesterday a lengthy revenue sharing webinar and. Jen and I were both in the same webinar and it it's gonna be quite a task what they're requesting uh from the court's office. And it's due by January fifteenth and this is some reports I'm gonna have to get from the treasurer. Um some if I can't figure out how to run it myself and some work from Tina, who's gonna be doing special payrolls, first payouts. Uh taxes. I I don't know how we're gonna get this done by the fifteenth. Um and then Trina is gonna probably be the main person on this project, but. They want to do a like a statewide study of all the courts. And basically a lot of what Linda Atkinson did before she retired as far as uh collections. They want to see if it will be better based on taking on at the state level, which sounds like a catastrophe to me, but what do I know? Um other than that. That's about all we have. We're just uh Tina and Trina are really working on wrapping up year end final payments and all that good stuff.
Thank you. Congratulations during your packets, uh grew your. Committee reports from Charlie Taylor, Karen Lee.
Um. The news, the news thing the last two weeks towards the um. Retirement, well, it wasn't good that you retired, but Linda Atkinson retired. Uh many, many former employees were here and that was nothing at all and she received. Law wishes from both Christine and Trudy and the um. Chair. And then also, uh as you know, there was an all sign proof uh. Note of. Appreciation that was given to it also. Um meetings with A C C O A, two on one and Clid um. And relatively normal activities in all of them.
Um I just got a couple township meetings. I know, yeah, I don't decide to do their their monthly meeting the same day as Oklahoma townships. I didn't know why, but anyways, that's that's going on. We have department, our health department. Um where we had it, uh a pretty good conversation with Corey Upper and some of the subject tank legislation. I guess you could find out what we've been talking about until uh today's last day, the house is in session. Um so we'll find, they watered it down immensely. Um but it's complicated and it it's probably just as much as a mess as it's always been. Um and I don't know if you if you talked to Doug on uh the Cherry Capital, get just any more than what's on this.
No, I read through the report and. Are you done?
Yep.
Okay. So you've read through the report. Um I think we we had announced earlier about Murphy broadband has. Forfeit and everything, but we'll add uh while he says here a thousand new potential locations, uh actually twelve hundred potential locations are there, which. Which will add to the grant. Um I did let them know that there was not gonna be any more money. I mean, if it's so they, you know, they were obviously there. The money that we have given them was based off of what they thought was available. Now there's more available, but I. Reiterated to them, there's no more money coming from here for you to do more work, pay engineering, more planning. And I hardly know they understood that. Um and told Doug the same, he just passed it on along, so. And everything is here, there's nothing. Uh veterans, so didn't make their meeting, we had EMS yesterday, but I did uh. Miss these meetings, sound freedom, I think. Oh, this way. Um. Did have a uh. Uh was able to talk to Pat this morning, get an update um with what's going on with veterans that uh it's going well. They're they're kind of standstill for their overhang and pavilion and outdoor outdoor work that they wanted to get finished this year. It's not gonna happen probably till spring. Um it did come up and I I told Adam about it, but I'll tell the rest of you. Okay, when we were doing our budget workshop. We noticed the fund balance at the bottom of the veterans that was fairly healthy at about a hundred ninety or two hundred thousand dollars. Um and I, it's my fault. I didn't think of it either at the time that they do put twenty five thousand a year into the fund. Uh kind of rainy day fund, so if they ever do lose mileage, they were they're built up, probably close to a hundred thousand dollar. I will say though, in talking to Pat, we did, I said, we'd like to sit down and have a meeting because they would like to do something with that hundred thousand. Uh invested in a even just a C D or something because if they're not using it, it's just doing its thing. It's not really doing anything. Or they they're, doesn't have to be liquid as well that way, so so. Um we'll set up something with you and you can sit down and I mean, they won't have another meeting till January. Um but if there's, and they weren't looking for anything exotic, if it's only a six month C D, I think it's probably um. Appropriate at this point. I think there's close to a hundred thousand dollars. Twenty twenty five and um. D H D, as Dave said, yeah, septic code's a big thing. So I I had a nice little speech, I got the D H D meeting, if you'll have to hear it again, but. Did a little bit of research on this whole septic code situation. So both uh the state of Ohio and state of Indiana have gone state septic codes. Uh they've had state septic code for the last ten years. We do not have a state septic code. Their failed septic tank rate is much higher than ours with ten years of state septic coating. Um not only that, that their their rates of in both states, their rates of failure have increased since the state took over. The septic code from the local entities. So this is, this is a fool's errand that they're doing. There's a bureaucracy that's trying to get created above the head of the our local departments of health. That's gonna just cost money and time and lots more of this stuff lying around, so.
Well, and I think because they're trying to get rid of point of sale. So if that comes, the new code comes in, I I they haven't said, I mean, so some counties like Benzie County has a point of sale, so when now. The property is sold, they have to have an inspection at that time. Um and there's some county township has the same thing. Um. Benzie County went from a seventeen percent failure rate to three percent failure rate in the last fifteen years. So obviously it works. Um but the the uh lobbyists or the um. Real estate companies don't like it, obviously, because it holds up and it probably kills a lot of deals.
So I know that you can get kind of glazed over when you think of all this, well, that doesn't really matter to us. It does, and so the director has. Said at that meeting yesterday, she is going to request an increase in our uh yearly amount. They haven't done it in ten years, so we're going to get. There is a, there is an increase coming. If this passes and they have to hire a bunch of new sanitarians, that increase is gonna be a dramatic increase. It'll be spread out amongst all the counties. So our ninety four thousand and some odd dollars that we paid each D two could easily double or triple if we have the. Fund of these sanitary and the.
And and their, the grants are drying up.
Yeah.
That they that they.
Our money's gone, all that's gone, so.
Just we'll fall back on the locals. We will pay it.
Yeah, hopefully the state was going to code for what they'll pay this over.
No, what they're gonna do is create a super fund. So after they, after they pay. All your money because you didn't do what they told you to do and they put it in the super fund for those who have to get a septic tank fixed and they don't have the money. Then that super fund is supposed to be paying for that, but as far as the, yeah.
Well, you have a thousand dollar inspection fee for home, is what they're looking at right now on a little changes. They're on the eleventh version right now.
Yeah, if if the burden gets heavier on our local department, they're gonna pass it on to us. This is the way it's gonna be. Uh that's all I have.
Okay, uh last section of uh public comment today? Yes?
Um I just am absolutely sure you guys are gonna look at your bulletins again. So I just want to clarify that the chart in the back. Is just stuff that I listed. The haggins between equalization and the local units. So there's no way saying. That's all equalization does, that's all the treasurers do, that's all the assessors do, so.
Everybody else public comment? Relax, I'm not here to repeat it. Um it's the role of the department heads here and I'm wanting to advocate for their offices. I think we all do a really good job of that. Um I must be feeling falling short. I I clearly I'm uh. I'm not in here telling you exactly what we're doing and you're not maybe not getting getting the point out how important public safety is. I will attempt to do better at that in communication, probably as little delay, I can help do my part and move on. Um I'd like to come over at more of the meetings and and give a presentation of what we do and what's going on at the sheriff's office so that you guys are a little more aware of that. Um maybe I could get on the agendas like the.
Sheriff's report?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, absolutely sheriff's report.
Yeah, I I'd like to do that. Um in in the, in the short term, you know, if you don't know, we handle over four thousand calls per service a year. Uh we're not done with the year yet, but my my deputies are averaging two hundred and fifteen hours of overtime right now this year. That's five weeks of overtime each, you know, so we come in here, we advocate that our officers are understaffed and overworked. Show me another one who are working two hundred hours, five weeks of overtime, five and a half weeks of overtime a year for prison. They're not one. And that's not, and that's not because we're sending no extra staff. That's minimal staffing, absolute minimal. Um. You do a keyword search in the Michigan compiled law for the word sheriff, four hundred and fifty times it shows up. I know you guys go to Mac and you listen to them. I think we're wasting money, seven people to Mac because they're absolutely wrong saying that road patrol is not required. It is required. Law enforcement services are required and Michigan compiled law lists us four hundred and fifty times. Not state police, not city police, sheriffs, because there's certain things old sheriffs can do and. Nobody else can do it. Nobody else can provide fail cert or uh court services. We have to. We can't do that with uncertified people coming in there to do it. So let's keep in mind that we need to be have a robust sheriff's office. Um we are eleven people short of where I was when I took office. That's half. My office is half the size of what it was before. They're not another department in the county or anywhere around as half the size as it was then. I can't keep cutting. We're we're bare minimum, so I trust that when you guys said. I trust that when you guys said I could, if I needed to hire somebody, found somebody adequate this summer, I trust you, you'll, you'll follow up on that, if I do, um, you'll follow through with that, I trust that'll happen. Uh, we are, we are a great agency, we are seen as the foremost sheriff's office in northeast Michigan. I don't, I didn't make that up, I heard it from other sheriffs. Ten years, we've had two lawsuits, both absolutely frivolous, both have been dismissed very quickly, but we've paid zero dollars out on it. Your exposure to liability is the sheriff's office in jail, we've reduced quite a bit of it by not having a jail, and we illuminated a lot of it by having good supervision and good police officers out there on the road. If we didn't, we'd be like all the surrounding counties around here who have lawsuits from time to time, not because they're doing things wrong, but maybe because their policies weren't up to date or tighter, or anything like that. Um, so we, we always have things to improve on, I think I have to improve on communication with this board, and I'm willing to do that, I'd like to do that, um. And not just on what we're doing week to week, but maybe on some of the operations that we're not so clear on. Uh, you know, and some of the funds that we have, like book and fee money, what do we do with that, and how we spend that, what's going on with the school resource officer, so I'm gonna do my part to advocate for my office. Everybody else seems to do a good job of that, and, uh, I, I'd love to do better on my end.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Everybody else public comment? So, okay, then, uh, additional comments, Mr.?
Well, I would, I'd like to I've got my last say on this issue, so I didn't, I'm a little disappointed, I wish it wouldn't come this way with adding another position in the county. Another union position, uh, it has been, I know Adam and I have been on this board for not as long as Carolyn, but we have talked about county administrator, we've talked about executive secretaries, and things that address, uh, media, the issue on the board. Um, that would be, I think, governor's place to put an additional uh, position A, uh, or certainly anything in the sheriff's department, um, again, I, I, I will explain my opposition and my unfortunateness of this, so that's my view.
Anybody else?
Scott, can you make a few words, okay?
Thank you. Anybody, uh, adjourned till next meeting?